Public hearing items on the agenda tonight. Um, so thanks. We got a pretty good crowd tonight. So thanks, everybody for coming. Like I said, three items on the agenda. The first, I'll just read out what they are and then we'll get started. The first is going to be amending the zoning law regarding mixed use waterfront. The second is repealing a temporary six month moratorium on mixed use waterfront. And then the third is the police advisory committee report or plan in accordance with the New York State Police Reform and Reinvention Collaborative Executive Order 203. So those will be the three items that we go through tonight. Let's start with what will be what is proposed local law number two of 2021, amending the zoning law concerning the mixed use waterfront district. There's quite a few pages here. Obviously, I'm not going to try to read the whole thing. In the purpose section, this is aligned with the village comprehensive plan. Recognizing that the riverfront is critical to the village of Athens from a standpoint of economic viability, growth, tourism, cultural and recreational assets, and the environmental health of the village. In order to protect that, we are making the following changes. The changes are predominantly, and I'll step in anytime if I misspeak, they're predominantly around the removal of industrial uses as a special permitted use of mixed use waterfront. So as I think everybody knows, maybe not, I'll talk about it a little bit. There are no permitted uses for mixed use waterfront. Anything that someone wants to do in a mixed use waterfront district requires a special permit to do it. So it requires that you go to the planning board and achieve a special permit, and it must be one of the listed items in the zoning law. So this really, the amendments here are amendments by omission rather than a lot of new writing. There's some changes to ensure that the structure supports it. But the primary point of it is in section 250 deck 14, section C, where it does list the special permitted uses, you will notice that industrial use is not among them. I did want to ask, I assume it doesn't spell it out specifically, Tal, but section 10 mixed use structure. I assume that by mixed use, it means a mix of the nine above it?
That's correct.
Okay. Hello, everybody. Hey, Charles. Please go on mute if you would until we get to the comments section, if you have any questions.
Sure.
Beyond that, you know, it talks about that it should have water related usage. At any rate, I won't read the whole thing. It's been on the website. If anyone has any questions or concerns over that, please unmute yourself and we'll go into the public portion now. If anyone wants to make a comment. If there's a lot of people talking, I don't know, is there a raise your hand feature in Zoom? I'm used to Google.
There is.
There is.
A lot of people talking, we'll figure out how to raise our hand. Is that in reactions?
I know, I usually just tell.
There we go. My hand is raised in reactions. So if you've got something rather than being stepped on, just go ahead and click the raise your hand feature. Okay. So regarding local law number two of 2021, law concerning the mixed use waterfront district zoning, any questions or concerns on that that anyone would like to voice? Josh?
Uh, Stefan, what about arts and education uses?
Those, those were not previously listed. We just suppose we could add them in if that's what the board and the comp plan is looking for. I did not see that there.
Looking at if it's covered under anything else, you know, even where it talks about retail, it wants to be water related. Service business, supportive water related activities. Though it's not really there. It would be kind of a stretch to get there if we wanted to do arts and education as part of this. Thoughts from the board?
One question, Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead, Ricky.
How does this affect Peckham?
It does not.
So because it's air, it's not going to affect them whatsoever.
That's correct.
That's, that's correct. Their grandfather, it's called, you know, the, the legal term is preexisting nonconforming use. And we haven't changed our grandfather language, which basically just says, it was in existence at the time of the enactment, then it gets to stay as long as it wants. You know, there can be some reasonable expansion, but not a whole lot, which is pretty generous, I have to say, because a lot of zoning laws do have essentially a sunset for grandfather. You know, they'll say, you know, anything that's a preexisting nonconforming is good for now, but in five years, it's going to have to terminate or seven years or, or, you know, whatever is the vision of the particular municipality. But the village didn't do that. Now they recognized that Peckham's a pretty big part of the village and didn't want to effectively slowly phase them out.
So with this, the village will not be putting any more or any restriction down Peckham with this? Okay, so Peckham is free and clear of this.
That's correct.
Okay, that, that was my main concern. Thank you for answering it.
Yep.
Merrill?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, as a follow up question. What, in the event that Peckham or any other industrial use sells the property or leases the property, does the grandfathering continue?
As long as the use is there and continues unbroken, yes. It doesn't matter who carries it out. It's the use that actually is grandfathered, not the owner. There is, I believe, a two year abandonment period so that if it shuts down more, it's either two or three years. If they shut down for longer than that, then, then they're gone. Then they've lost their grandfather.
Thank you.
Yep. Let me, I'll jump online while we're talking, see if I can find that.
Want to just go in order of the hand raises?
How do you do the hand raise?
Physically had his hand up at the beginning.
I'm watching the chat. You got to watch the people. I'll watch the chat.
So how does this affect the other properties that like Elko boat and the former Pecan Maintenance Site, they can never be produce anything ever again?
They're not.
Is that what you're saying?
That's right. No industrial usage here.
So you're basically erasing 200 years of history of Athens that nothing is going to be made on the waterfront after Peckham leaves. You don't see an issue with that?
No, that's what the village asked for in the comprehensive plan. I think that's what we're pushing for as a whole, and we have not seen, I mean, I understand that that history is what 50, 60 years old? We haven't, other than Peckham, we haven't had any industrial use on the waterfront.
Did anybody ever verify where those comprehensive plan surveys came from? Were they actually from residents of the village? I know there's this, how many people said they want an industry to go away from the waterfront? Was there ever a number put to that?
I don't have that in front of me.
Okay.
Just going back to Ricky's question, the discontinuance for commercial uses is three years. For mobile homes, it's one year. For the abandonment period. So sorry, go ahead.
Who's next? I've got Jason.
Uh, Jason, I was Peckham. I believe my question has already been asked. So I think I'll just continue the list.
Okay. Jane?
Hi, thanks. Um, it just obviously piqued my curiosity. This is probably a little off the topic, but Tal, you mentioned that, you know, I understand the grandfather clause for Peckham. Is that an addressable issue at any point? That they've been grandfathered in? Can they, can, are there conditions laid down that would, would enable the village to not have them grandfathered in?
Um,
Thanks.
It's, I suppose it's possible. We would have to go back and do, you know, in five or six or 10 years, whenever it's time to, to do an upgrade or retool of our comprehensive plan to have, to see if that is the movement, if that is where the village wants to go. The people in the village would have to speak, we'd have to do the surveys again, and it would have to be, I think, pretty overwhelming to do something like that. And then, yes, we could do, as I, as I mentioned, a sunset of the grandfather, whether it's, you know, five, seven, 10 years, you know, whatever it is that the village and the village people think. It's got, it's, it's, it's a tall order because it's it's close to a constitutional taking. And there's always that argument that when zoning comes or when it gets amended, that you take away somebody's constitutional right to operate or continue to operate what they've always been doing. And so you've got to have some pretty overwhelming and pretty compelling authority to do so, you know, and it can't just be a show of hands, you know, to comprehensive board meetings saying, yeah, we don't like it anymore. Let's get rid of them. It's got to be, you know, like an economic study that shows that, that 90% of our income or, you know, some, something that's overwhelming is coming from the waterfront on non-commercial activities and that this particular use now really is standing in the way of the village moving forward.
Okay, thanks. I was just, I was responding to.
Let me just finish. It's
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's possible, but it's a tall order.
Okay. I was just, you know, bringing this up on the heels of, this will be our second comprehensive plan where citizens have stated quite clearly that, you know, what might have been okay in regards to air and sound pollution many, many years ago is not agreeable at this time. I mean, things change. So it was something that was brought up seven years ago or more now, and then in this recent comprehensive plan. So that seemed like a compelling, at least something to, you know, run to ground further. But I get what you're saying. Thanks.
All right, let's try that again. The dog was barking. I'm muted. Any other questions or concerns?
Um, we just didn't really address the arts and education thing that Josh brought up. I think that would be.
I made a note, I was going to see how many changes we had and then ask Tal if we had few enough changes that we could add that verbally and proceed, or if we needed to come back to it at a following meeting.
Okay.
We were already over that threshold, in my opinion, by adding a new use that's never been in that zone before. Yeah, I think that we would need to do a public hearing. That's a fairly substantive change.
Could that be, that couldn't be fall under mixed use structure?
That was the first question.
Definitions, I don't think so.
Okay.
And my other Should be two of the uses or some, a mix of the uses listed above it.
Okay. And my other question in regards to what Bob said is, is there any allowance in here for something that's like a low impact sort of? You know, he, he said, do we want there to be nothing made on the river anymore, on the waterfront anymore? And I mean, there are certain types, I guess, of low impact manufacturing, more like, um, that doesn't pollute that, you know, people, it could be a maker space or something like that. Is that allowable? Under this, so like, there could be craftspeople or something, you know, that's low impact on the environment, but still sort of celebrates the history of creating and building and making here in the village.
Yeah, we do have, we do have that fail safe built into it and all zoning laws do. That, you know, if somebody comes in with an application, because it's impossible to define every single use, you're just never going to know, you're never going to find every single one of them. And so if someone comes in with an application, they, the first stop is with the code enforcement officer. And they say, you know, we're going to buy XYZ property and we want to do A to it. And, and they say, is that allowed in this zone? And the code enforcement officer looks at it and it's their responsibility in the first instance to look at it and make a determination that yes, it does fit under number three, service business oriented, supportive, water related, or it's, you know, it falls in one of those categories. And the, once they issue that determination, it's got to be in writing. Anybody who is against that, whether or has, is an agreed party can file an appeal to the zoning board of appeals, and it could be either the applicant or surrounding neighbors that don't like the, the determination of the, the CEO or the CEO. And then, you know, the zoning board of appeals would take it up and say, yeah, we agree, we uphold the determination. Or, you know, sorry, we disagree and, you know, no, we're going to reject this use.
Okay.
Or vice versa.
Josh, I'll come to you. Josh, I'll come to you in a second. I think Molly had her hand up next.
Or vice versa, if the CEO says, no, it's not. They could also appeal it. The applicant could appeal it to the ZBA. And again, you know, thumbs up, thumbs down.
Molly?
Hi. Um, so my one, my one concern with vesting everything about mixed use into waterfront usage, or at least in the language where the impression is that unless it's a unless it's something that directly leads to or has to do with water, I think that kind of limits us a little bit. I mean, I'm now in a situation where I'm looking at this personally because it's required property, which is part of mixed use. So, I mean, if, if the idea is to generally enhance the village's persona of being a waterfront location, that strikes me as being an easier, an easier issue than having to pigeonhole all future uses into, is it related to the waterfront or not directly? That, that gives me a little bit of pause. I'll be honest. Thank you.
I'm talking about clause E, I assume Molly, that says use of mixed use waterfront shall provide for some form of water related recreation use as an accessory use on the site.
Yes.
That's already in.
People, I mean, if you're just sort of observing it from some other I, yeah, but since we're reemphasizing this, I mean, I don't know how much we, we focused on that before, but now with a, I just, I worry that it pigeonholes us a bit, but yeah.
Could we remove that?
Why would we remove it? I could see changing the shell to a should there.
Yeah. I mean, because even, um, I don't remember her name, the artist who's going to be working.
Carol Boe.
Yes. That's not water related recreation, you know?
In fact, I was going to say that's arts and that's also fabrication.
She will be building things and making.
Yeah. So, so to, I mean, that isn't that, that kind of said, that's was my thought after what you said, Amy, about could we find some way to incorporate what Rob Runner was saying about, can we ever manufacture again on our waterfront with you saying, how do we make that modern and today? Well, you know, arts, fabrication, art studios is all about fabrication. And even, I was going to say, Stefan, even your talk about perhaps leasing the building at the old, the, I don't want to call it this anymore because want to get rid of the memory, but the Athens C and D site, you know, you're talking about leasing that to education, an educational entity. So we, we seem to have arts and education imposing themselves on our waterfront. And, and there's, you know, the opportunity for fabrication in artists' studios and even in education, if you had some kind of a a workshop for a vocational workshop to train people to manufacture small, non-noisy, non-polluting items and then sell them, you know, you.
Yeah. I mean, if I can just step in on a continuation of this, I mean, the locations that we're talking about are in areas that are going to be tricky to attract. Anyway, these are often flood zone areas. They are not necessarily places where people are going to be setting up facilities necessarily. So if everything is geared around building something or providing something that requires access to the river for recreation, whatever, I mean, these are all good things. I'm, I'm just trying to look ahead over five to 10 years on what realistically we are pigeonholing ourselves into if we make it so straight and strict around the recreation and focus on the water. Even though these are waterfront areas, but still, just if we can maybe expand it a bit so that we're, we're just opening up more doors and opportunities for people with good ideas. That's all.
I, I, I agree with that from the, from the CAC point of view, Conservation Advisory Council, and both Molly and I are members. We've been getting presentations about the flooding, you know, we had at Christmas time and that flooding is going to probably be more frequent and more severe in the coming years, just due to more frequent and more severe weather events and the rise of the Hudson River. So I don't know, this zoning law talks about what can be done. But what about the idea of looking at whether there are any areas that if they become available should be left open so that, you know, you don't build something and as Molly is saying, subject to flooding or, or at a minimum, I, I don't know, we haven't gotten to this yet in our C I CAC meetings, but do we have other zoning laws about things needing to be built to be flood proof now if they're built on the waterfront? I know we had down next to the to the wastewater treatment plant, there were a couple of homes that were built and they're on stilts. And I don't know if that's because that's now required or because they were just being foresightful. But there, there might, we might want to put language, a, a, a separate letter.
To, to keep this, so I hear you. I think that's probably a good idea, but I think it's out of scope for what we're trying to do with this, which is specific to the feedback from the comprehensive plan and the industrial. So I'd like to keep the, this particular local law focused on the removal of the industrial and how we tweak it for that. And if the board wants to come back later and address that issue, I think that's a fair issue, but I think it's out of scope for this particular law.
Okay, Sylvia, did you want to speak?
Yeah, yeah. Hi. Yeah, you can hear me, right?
Yep.
So I am new to this because my, my husband and I bought a, a house on Brick Row about a year ago. And, you know, tell me, I also missed the first few minutes, but it seems you got a very quick start. But there's something that came up a few months ago, which is that in a real estate office, I saw a listing indicating that the site next to us, I guess it's going, this huge 600 acre site, I think they came to one of your meetings. Planning, the buyers were planning on putting in some kind of a, well, ostensibly like a glamping facility, but the more I looked into it, it actually really seemed to look like a kind of hotel development. And they were hoping to use the sewer system, which is sort of vaguely promised in the listing. I know that the people came to the meeting and asked some questions, the, or some meeting, or maybe it was, there's a difference between the town and the, but it was.
That would be village. I know the, the 17 acres you're talking about Sylvia, they, to my knowledge, have not been to a meeting. I don't believe they've been to the planning board. Their lawyers contacted me and we talked about what's listed in here, and we talked about the moratorium, but they did not give me any indication as to what it was they were doing. They talked about the option of going with glamping, which I told them was not in the current special use permitting as it's written.
It's not.
No, it, it, that, that it requires to meet, in my view, to meet the requirements in here, it needs to be permanent structures, not semi-permanent, not unpermanent structures.
Hey, Stuart, it's Jeff. I could speak to that if you want me to.
Yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
And by the way, can I, can I just say that the reason I'm asking is that a, a couple of times when I've gone to Hudson, I pass by the real estate office that has that listing and it says in contract. Now, I don't know if that's real or not, but anyway.
Well, I tell you what, I, because it's not pertinent to this particular law, I'd rather stay focused on, on the law here. That's something we can talk about at another time. I'm not familiar with whether that's under contract or not.
Right, but what I, in a general sense, if they wanted to, you know, I know that the plan, I think, was, or I saw this in their other site that they own, you know, to build community centers and actually have some kind of sewage established and, you know, so that's an actual building. Is that allowed under the new use? In other words, they would
What they're using the building for.
There, there is no new use, understand too. We have actually removed a use. We've not added anything.
Okay.
Now, I think that our code enforcement officer had, had some comments there too.
Yeah, they, they appeared at a, I want to say the December, um, maybe November, uh, planning board meeting. And it was an inquiry at the time, we still had the moratorium and it seemed to have dissuaded them. They currently own the, I don't think it's, it's not called this anymore, but I don't know the new name. But it's the Indian Ridge or Indian Fields Camping Area over in Leeds. So that's, that was their plan, you know, to, to use that area for, again, glamping, glamour camping, if you will, and to add in walkways and try to develop the area a bit. They would need to tap into sewage for restrooms and of the like. So your community based showers or, or water facilities of some sort, you know, freshwater, et cetera. But, um, that, that's the extent of that. But again, to the mayor's point, I think that's maybe not what the, we're trying to focus here.
Stefan, can I say a couple of things? Um, I, I do think, I, I'm just wondering whether the item three, service business oriented to and or supportive of water related activities might not allow for glamping. Since glamping is a service and presumably it would be related because it's, I assume they would be doing it because of, you know, its access to the river. So that was my first comment. My second was, I, I know you want to limit this just to not including industry, and yet the preamble does talk about protecting the, the waterfront assets. And I just, I was, wanted to just suggest possibly a, a, a letter entry in here in the same way that you have one that says, though you may be modifying it, that all uses shall provide for some form of water related recreation is, you could say that any use must also consider, I don't know, environmental impacts. So that when anyone is submitting something to the planning board, they have to say, you know, what the flood risk is for the area. And, you know, what, how they're going to prepare for it, you know, many communities are grappling with how to handle development in flood prone areas. And so I just, without maybe being restrictive or prescriptive, we can just put into the, the law that that has to be included as part of any application. There has to be some discussion of that, or otherwise it's possible that an applicant would not put anything in like that and the planning board might not consider it. And you build something and then And you build something and then you end up with, you know, a flood, flood or something later, so.
I can, I can handle those. The first, to your first question, that interpretation is going to be up to Jeff Russo. I mean, if it falls within that, within that definition in his opinion, then it does and it can be appealed to the zoning board of appeals. But that's Jeff's job to make that determination. That's why we, that's why we appointed him. That's why he gets his training and he's good at it. So that, that'll be the first step and we've got to fail safe for the appeal to the ZBA. For, to your second question, the environmental aspect of it is absolutely already part of the review, not only because State Environmental Quality Review Act requires it and is required of every single application that goes before the planning board and they really do take that very seriously. So there will be that aspect of it, but also right in the very language of especially use permit application and all of the required items that need to be proven in order to support that application. The environmental review, including stormwater, all of those things are included in that language already.
Thank you, Tal. That's absolutely correct.
So just as a point of information, if, if somebody wanted to develop a property like the one that I described, which seemed to which would likely involve trucks moving in and out of what they call honey wagons, removing waste and so on, the environmental impact of, for example, large trucks going in and out to a waterfront site would also be considered.
Absolutely.
All right. Any other comments or feedback?
Sorry, I didn't mean to make fun of what you were saying. Whenever somebody says honey truck, it makes me giggle. I don't know why.
It's such an inappropriate term.
Exactly.
What it is.
I sell honey and I have a truck. Come on now.
Any other comments or feedback? Any other comments or feedback? Don't forget to unmute if you're trying to make a comment.
Go ahead. So I want to go back what Rob said earlier. So if this goes through to let both companies done. Am I correct? You won't be able to use that?
Is it a current use?
No.
How long has it been idle?
Years. Can anybody move in there?
Somebody already has.
They have?
Yeah. Artist.
What did they do with that, with that business, Ricky?
What's that?
What did they do with, with that business for the electric boat company?
They made electric boats.
They, they manufactured them?
Yes, they did.
The company moved to Connecticut. The, the company still has an employee that, that works there. I've met him on my regular police duties. But they largely moved the entire company to Connecticut.
Well, so that's a question then that again, may come down to an interpretation by Jeff and his department. And that is, has it been abandoned or is it still continuing because they do have one person on staff at the site?
That's, that's a tough question, ain't it?
Well, I would, you know, I'm not gonna, I'm not here to speculate. I presume if somebody wanted to utilize that building for something similar and their application came through, in theory, I'd be, I, I personally would, would be, had the proclivity to want to allow that to go to a public hearing and go in front of the board. Because that is probably, I'd imagine, and I think a lot of us would agree, an identity, a part of the identity of a river town of Athens. And, you know, considering what they may try to do there and what their impact was to environment, to include sound, would, would be something to, at least worth entertaining to hear, you know, if not.
So we'll, we, I've got a note here to look at, how do we put wording in there that speaks to some form of low-impact fabrication that still excludes the, the high-impact industry that we were working to exclude. So we've got to work on the wording for that. What that means is we're not passing this, this week and that's okay. That's why we do this. So we'll come back and review this again, either at the next meeting or at a subsequent meeting to review new language to try to cover what we've talked about today, which is arts and education, it's fabrication, it's the shall clause of water-related recreational versus should. Those are the primary ones that I heard. We talked about the environmental already being covered. Any other comments or feedback on this?
Mayor, do we have to prove this tonight?
No. We're not going to.
Yeah.
Well, it's something to think about. I guess there's a lot to think about.
Yep, we got, we've got to make some changes. So we'll, we'll make some changes and come back to a public hearing in a few weeks.
Thank you. That'd give me time to study more.
Any other feedback before we close on this one? Make sure you come off mute if you want to make feedback. Any other feedback before we close this one? All right, I'm going to close the public comment portion of local law number two. Thank you for the feedback on that. We'll come back to this one at a future time. Given that, I'm inclined, so I will not be looking to repeal the temporary six-month moratorium until we've closed the changes to the zoning law. We do have it on the calendar, on the agenda though. So does anyone have any questions or concerns over the six-month moratorium? But this is one we'll come back to as well when we come back to the, the first law.
The only thing that I would interject here is that we are in month five, I think, of the six-month current extension. So if we're going to go much more than next month with our next version of the public hearing in the local law, we probably should look at a further, maybe three-month extension just for protection purposes.
So what I will, what I'd hope is we can get the changes made to the first law by the next meeting and see if we can close it out, but we probably ought to have a three-month extension in our back pocket should we fail to close it at the next meeting.
Okay, all right. Very easy to do. So we just need to make sure that we leave enough time on the calendar to get to the public hearing and get it enacted.
We could, we could add both a, the change to the law. We could add a public hearing on rescinding the six-month moratorium and we could add a public hearing on extending the six-month moratorium, right? All three of those could be on the same meeting.
Well, and even, you know, at this point, the repealer is almost unnecessary.
True, true. At, at, you're right. At the point, at the next meeting, it probably does become. Fair enough. All right. Were there any comments on local law number three, repealing the temporary six-month moratorium? I won't spend a lot of time on this one. If you do want to make a comment, come off mute. Are there any comments or concerns over local law number three? Okay, very good. Moving on. So I'll close the public.
Stefan, Stefan, will we be able to finalize all this? When you say the next meeting, so you mean in two weeks' time, just so we can wrap it up?
Try to come back to this in two weeks' time. Yes, Ma.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe what we can do then, instead of closing the public hearing is leave it open. And you, you just email me your list of things that you want added to, to the law and I'll turn them around as quickly as I can so that we can get them out to everybody and just continue the public hearing in two weeks.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And just one more comment, if I could. Would there be any harm, because I do understand the importance to you, Mr. Mayor, of getting that industrial situation, the, the broad industrial situation taken care of, given how life is, wouldn't it be prudent to go ahead and take the three, the extended three months? Given the changes that are coming.
Public, that has to be on the agenda as a public.
Oh, it has to be? Okay, cool.
We'll have that on the next public hearing.
All right. So it's not something we can just.
No, it's got to be a local law to extend.
All right, thanks.
Also, just a reminder that there is on the website, a form, if you have more comments that you can send in just directly from there, if you think of something, click it, send it, we'll get it.
Okay, let's move on to executive order 203, New York State Police Reform and Reinvention Collaborative. That has been up on the website. Obviously, it's 10 pages. I'm not going to attempt to read it. I'll go through some of the highlights for everybody. So first of all, this was a mandatory event for those who are not aware that the village, all municipalities with police forces, per Governor Cuomo's executive order, needed to perform a review of those. It gave a list of who should participate. It gave a, a list of the types of things we were expected to review as part of that. I see several of the members of that committee on, so thank you for joining. Let's see here. I put a little preamble in the beginning that I won't bother to read to everybody. I give a little bit of a background on, we give a little bit of the background on executive order 203 and what its intent was. Obviously, I put, I put a link in there as well, so anyone can go read the entirety of the executive order. We provide a little background information on the police, including the current demographics. The bar chart that I put in there represents only arrests made by the Village of Athens Police. There are arrests that are made by either state or sheriff, where we do assist, but may not make the arrest and it doesn't show up in the data that I included on there. And obviously that is purely arrest data. It's not indicative of all of the various activities that our police engage in, including home visits, investigating incidents, vehicle lockouts, disturbances, et cetera. I go into some of the pertinent information kind of as it stood, when, you know, on day one, when we got started with this review, we spent a lot of time with the chief, who was obviously a part of this, is required to be a part of this committee. And we looked at, you know, where we stand today. The police demographics was part of that. We'll talk about the training as part of that as well. But for example, chokeholds were already outlawed in Athens Police policy. There is a duty to intervene. In other words, you cannot stand by as an officer and watch another officer take inappropriate behavior. That's already in, in our policy. We do not have body cameras. We don't have cameras in our vehicles either. That was a topic that we spent some time on that I think we'll come back to in the future as well. Right now, you won't see any recommendations on use of cameras, predominantly due to limited budget and the need to, to plan for it and budget for it. But it's something we did spend some time on. Let's see here. We talked, there's very little use of social media, which is something that comes up a lot as we go through a lot of the other views of police reform and, you know, sort of modern policing. So we took a look at current state. There is no use of social media currently with the Athens Police Department. That's something we'll come to here a little later on. Training, there is use of force training. There is annual firearm training and workplace violence training. All training records are maintained by the department. I go a little bit into budget. It's a very small budget. There's not a lot to go into. So it talks about the hours of policing that we include in that budget, which amounts to essentially eight hours of policing a day is what we currently budget for. We try to flex that around so that it's not always the same time this, every day. We do have additional shifts for things like street festival, for music in the park, et cetera. We plan that into the plan and the budget. We do have a school resource officer who does a fantastic job up at the school every day. And then there's $26,000 for maintaining vehicles, bicycles, computers, supplies, uniforms, et cetera. I talk a little bit about the committee. I list the names of the committee members in there and then we go into initial thoughts of the committee. And, and, you know, we started with just kind of a generic, it was, it was a fairly, I think we did a pretty good job of getting a fairly broad representational committee that, that came in with, with differing views. And that showed in our sort of initial, how do we feel about policing in Athens and policing in general? And I put in there a couple of what some of that direct feedback was that we got. In general, you know, as I generalized that while there was feedback that it was, you know, perceived to be all male, all white. The general consensus was that there really weren't perceived to be significant problems with the Athens Police Department. There's not a sense of concern or fear of the Athens Police Department. And in general, we, we, the, the quote was, we're, we're 90% there and the focus of this committee is what can we do to get better and to close that 10% and to drive further improvement in what we did. And so that really kind of put an emphasis on community-based policing, which I'll talk about a little bit. And ensuring that we keep an eye on it, that we make sure that any changes that we do are sustainable. And I'll talk about that as well as we get into some of the recommendations. We did hire a consultant briefly to come and do some training for the team around bias in policing, around procedural justice for, to give us some items to consider as a board as we move forward. So to get to the recommendations, the first is a policy review. It's, this is really a mandatory element. It's something we're required to do. So we looked at how do we prioritize those so that we can get through them? We have two that will be submitted essentially with this and the intent is not to approve this via a sorry, what's the term I'm looking for here? A, we're not going to vote on this tonight. This is just a, a public hearing tonight. The intent would be, so, so we've got to have a plan in place per executive order 203 by April 1st, which means our next meeting on March 24th, I believe, is our last scheduled meeting at which to vote on this. So today is public hearing. If we need to, we'll go back and keep the public hearing open and look at it again at the next meeting with the intent to pass it at the next meeting. So at the next meeting, we do intend to have two articles complete with review and we spent a fair amount of time going through these. That's article five, mission goals and objectives, and article 52, use of force. Those were the two that we saw as the highest priority policies to get the initial review completed. We'll prioritize an additional eight that we intend to close this year. There's a, there's a huge number of articles. I won't even try to guess how many there are. It's in the neighborhood of what, 35 articles, Guy?
Two hundred, closer to one.
So mission goals and objectives and use of force, we intend to have done prior to the April 1st deadline and those are largely completed and ready for submission to the board. We'll continue that, trying to get 10 done, we're getting 10 done this year. And then I'll talk about the ongoing oversight committee and the intent will be to continue continually review these on an annual basis, picking kind of the, the next highest priority items and going through them routinely. Community policing is one that we've spent a fair amount of time on. We have a subcommittee focused on as well. Community policing engaged at how do the police better interact with the community, form relationships and, and be perceived as, you know, it, you know, it's less about more about partnership with the community, less about sort of that guardian mentality of the community. So we look at, you know, some simple things that came up honestly in the, in that initial, how do we feel sort of first couple of meetings was can we get out on foot and on bicycles more and, and engage more with the community? So that's something we're putting in the community policing document. Engaging in community events, so things like coffee with a cop, things like. Um, engaging in community events, so things like coffee with a cop, things like, uh, one of the officers. Uh, went to a children's birthday party and participated there, going to Hands and Hearts Mission and participating there. Getting out in the community, being engaged at those types of events, uh, booths at street festival, things like that. Um, improved use of social media, and this, uh, we, we've talked a lot about what that is and what that is not. That will be included, uh, a lot, in a lot of detail, uh, what we think is doable and not doable from a social media standpoint. We're trying to get to something that's realistic, that provides, uh, an ability to communicate with the. Uh, with the community, knowing that in general, we have one officer on eight hours a day. We don't want his primary job to be watching Facebook or Snapchat or Insta or whatever that may be. Uh, we want it as a tool, but we want to be realistic with how we use that, and that'll all be detailed, uh, in this, um, community policing document. Um, and then problem solving, how do we engage with businesses, how do we engage with residents? Uh, how do we identify areas of concern, uh, and address those in partnership? So that's what a community policing policy is aimed at, uh, obviously, it's a lot more extensive than what I've gone into here. The intent is that will be complete and ready for public review, uh, by the end of May. Um, we look quite a bit at training. Um, specifically around what we have today and what we thought we needed to address bias, to address de-escalation. To address some of the concerns that are out there that we see in the media every day. Wanted to ensure that we had the tools, that we were providing the tools to the officers to do that. So, uh, one of the items is mandatory de-escalation training, mandatory implicit bias training. In addition to the current, uh, training requirements, we want that in place by October, no later, I think we should be able to do that sooner. Uh, we're, there's an opportunity to cat, to, uh, partner with, uh, the Green County Sheriff that, you know. Not surprisingly, a lot of the findings, particularly around training, uh, in the various departments, look very similar. So that's an opportunity to really tie in with the Sheriff's Office and take advantage when they're doing training, et cetera. Um, on the job training with officers. Uh, we're looking at, how do we set up online training to reinforce the in-person training as well? Uh, so that's, uh, that's the training piece. We talked about the governance aspect and making sure that both the elements that we put in place as part of Executive Order two oh three. Are sustainable and that we're keeping an eye on trends in the future and changes that happen and best practices that we see. Uh, in other communities to keep current, to keep up with, uh, these types of pertinent changes. That are happening in policing, and to do that, we're gonna establish by law a civilian oversight committee. Um, and I give a little bit of the background of that here, plan will be for two-year terms. Again, this will include things like policy review, looking at any incidents that we may have had. Any other, uh, pertinent, uh, information that may have arisen from other communities or best practices. So we intend to have that written no later than October thirty-first of this year. Finally, I go into hiring and civil service test demographics, all of our hiring right now, and it states this in the beginning, we have fifteen officers. Fourteen of those are white males, uh, one is a black male. Uh, and we are somewhat limited because we only hire, uh, out of the civil service testing. Uh, for some very good reasons, and so I list in here, um, the information that I got from civil service. On how much diversity comes out of that civil service testing, and there's not much. Uh, so we make some recommendations, uh, to try to incentivize improvement there. We have limited, uh, influence over that ourselves, but we do want to make some, send up some recommendations to civil service. Uh, in an attempt to, to improve the demographics that we do get to hire from. So with that, that's a, a long-winded summary, I will open to public comment. Don't forget to come off mute. Jane?
Thanks, um. First of all, thanks to everybody who was involved in this. Um, as I was going over the, there's about, it's a really quick read, there's about seven pages. Of actual information and a few questions, you know, came to my mind immediately, but first. So there's, there's what I've read, and are you saying that? Because it feels kind of cursory, and I don't wanna diss all the work that I know everyone did, but it's, it's, um, that's how I read it. Um, are you saying that as this continues to unfold, there'll be different time goals? That this is gonna be much more fleshed out, much more specific, and by specific, I mean specific to the Village of Athens, right? Like, absolutely, just plain old nuts and bolts of, of, you know, how are, how are our police folks responding? When something comes up, that's been an experience I've had, where I never heard anything back. I mean, the real, just everyday stuff that happens in a small village. Um, and I don't know if that kind of falls into some of the policy stuff that you're gonna be, uh, fleshing out more. Um, the other thing is, I just wanted to make a statement about, um, I think it's really unfortunate. That unlike other communities, we didn't have an opportunity for, for a public meeting on this. Um, so that we could see, you know, w- what you all were, you know, working on and prioritizing. I know it, it's a cumbersome and, and long process, but I think the nature of policing, it would have been really good to have that, that transparency. It would have, I would have liked that, and I'm hoping when the final report comes out, that when you talk about. You know, we're ninety percent there, and I don't mean this flippantly, I mean, like, I need to understand what this body, what is there? You know, what, what does that mean? It doesn't, didn't mean anything to me when I read it. Um, and then lastly, in the oversight committee, is, are they gonna be empowered to make sure? That we are being proactive about finding new ways to have a representational. Um, diverse police force, I understand the great, the limitations that are articulated in the report. But I, it, that can't be the end, it can't be just us saying, oh, Green County civil service people. We encourage you to find other folks. Um, so I'd like to, you know, um, I'm hoping that we can perhaps be creative and find ways to. Address that, um, and then finally, um. When the report is finally complete and it's, and voted upon. Um, that is a document that's gonna be kind of sitting with the board and sitting with the police force, um, I'm assuming. And then that will be the guide for the, uh, the committee, the, uh, oversight committee. So, I got a bunch of thoughts there, but hopefully, somebody can sit on some of it.
Last piece again, Jane?
Uh, the last piece was, when the final report, is that gonna be the document that the, uh. The Oversight Committee is going to be using and, you know, as a guide?
Okay, so let me take some of those.
Thanks, I know there was a lot, thanks.
So first, to address your concern over specificity, this is a very top-level plan. So each of the elements of this plan will be fleshed out on the timelines provided in the plan. So for example, there'll be a detailed policy on community policing that will be written. So this, this does not represent the community policing policy, this is a plan that states we will generate a community policing policy. Alright, and then I think to, to answer your last question, this is not the plan that dictates we will have a civilian oversight committee. We will pass a law detailing exactly what the roles and responsibilities of a civilian oversight committee will be. And we've been talking about that a lot, we have detail that's not included in here, such as auditing, training events at the Sher, you know, with the sheriff. And, and access to, you know, what access can they get to incident report? Excuse me, incident reports, so, yeah, we're working at a much lever, much higher level of detail. For the, the laws and the policies that we're writing subsequent to this plan. Um, the next piece you brought up was around sort of. I'll call them peripheral elements of policing, right? So, d- did you, you know, you made a call and we didn't get a response, which is something that I'd like to address with the board, uh, when that happens. But that is not the intent of this committee. This committee is specifically focused on Article two oh, uh, Executive Order two oh three, and, you know, diversity and inclusion in policing. Okay, um, oversight specific to, a- and I, I know I'm not catching all of your elements. I tried to, to capture the ones that.
Nobody can follow all my elements, Mr. Mayor.
Um. Creative preferencing and increased diversity, uh, y- you know, we've, we've talked about it a lot. We've talked about, do we really wanna hire off the civil service, which limits, uh, and, and I don't see Roger there anymore. Limits, uh, getting them into schools and, and what are the limits of not hiring with, uh, the civil service test, Roger, that we discussed?
Okay, um, one that gives credibility to the, the officers who we're hiring. Uh, that it's just not somebody who's randomly chosen because somebody likes him, uh, he's not a political appointment. Uh, he actually had to earn the position that he's getting. And we've changed from doing, uh. The, doing that, so to speak, not that our people were really ever not qualified. But this gives them more credibility, we're being consistent in the hiring, and I think, uh, overall, we have a better police department because of it.
Okay. Alright, um. So, a- at any rate, so the, we, we've talked a lot about the civil service testing. I, I thought there were some additional reasons there, Roger, that we talked about, and I don't remember them off the top of my head, as far as, uh, getting into the schools.
Yeah, then, we, we did have a lot of reasons, um, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm at work, so I'm a little distracted here from the meeting. Um, but we did, uh, have very many things that we discussed one, around the hiring process. And, uh, the reasons why that we had done that, the one drawback is that. It does limit the, um. Number of people who are, we'll say just diverse. But we do, like, for instance, uh, we have found a female who is qualified and meets the civil service requirements. Uh, that we are looking at right now, uh, so it's not that we don't try to, and. You know, when we say we're going to use a civil service testing, well, that's how most departments. Larger departments hire, uh, you don't. I don't think you would have any large department, including the state police, that don't have some type of testing initially. To even get in the door before you start doing it, a background investigation, and among other things. And this also helps the officers build their, their career, a lot of, a lot of people we hire are younger people. Uh, and they're looking to start their careers, they start here, uh, many have moved on to. Other departments, uh, including the state police.
Hey, um, didn't we also, um, from the governance standpoint, say that, you know, a part of what we wanna do is look at. Well, you already pulled the records, Stefan, and maybe you already said this and I missed it, of previous years and the candidates that they've given us. And there was a real lack of diversity there, so I think a part of the governance committee is to track. Like, whether the civil servants candidate pool is getting more diverse or not. Um, and then I think also, we were gonna make a recommendation to, like, the state, correct? Or to Green County, that we need them to give us a, a more diverse slate of candidates. Because i- it seems like, you know, we, we need to be hiring from the civil servants pool. And they're just giving us, like, homogeneous candidates, like, and, and that just sucks, right? So the best that we can do is just urge and ask them to, you know, broaden that spectrum. To maybe do more recruiting in, I don't know, underrepresented communities, to maybe like, you know, do, like. Roger was telling us once that the NYPD does such a good job of recruitment. Um, and, and they, they, they go into different neighborhoods and they try and attract youth, uh, to get them on, you know, onto the police force. And, and I don't know if that's being done here in Green Tech County, I'm sure it probably isn't, and so, I don't know, like, how, how do? We wanna provide recommendations to, I guess, the civil servant body. In order for them to get more, more candidates applying that, you know, are women and are people of color, exa, you know, et cetera, et cetera. Just.
One of those, one of those things to reinforce what you're saying there, Guy, is the aspect of, uh, getting the state. To, uh, change the requirements or their, um. They have it so that to take the police officer test, you can take it up to, I think it says, your twenty-ninth birthday. And, uh, that can be extended till you're thirty-six, if you have six years in military. Now, we have in the past sent older people through the academy, uh, and they have done, uh, just fine. And even excelled above, uh, past younger people. Um, and I believe that that is one of the setbacks. Why we don't have such a diverse pool, because sometimes when people are younger, they don't know about it. They don't have a desire to do it, but then as they become older, they may have that desire to become a police officer. And only to find out that they now can't do it because of their age requirement. But that doesn't mean that they wouldn't be competent at being a police officer.
Hey, Jane, though, I, I think that, you know, I think that your point is valid, though, you know, it seems like it's, it's kind of a dead end. And there could be something else that can be done, we just couldn't come up with, like.
No, I, I appreciate that, Guy, I really do.
Well, you know, I, I wish.
I just know that this work is, is very hard and it's, um, not always easy. And you have to keep knocking on the door in any way you can. Um, and obviously, this, this one pool, um, especially given the area we live in. Uh, is only what it is, as you look at the, at the available candidates, you know, that it, it is by no means diverse. And if that is the only place, which I understand the chief's point, all, I understand all the points. I'm just saying, to really get real about this topic is going to be a matter of, you know. Being persistent, creative and honest all the time. And so I encourage, why not Athens Village? And continuing to be a pain in the ass to the civil servant, servant folks, I mean, why not? Someone's gotta do it, so why not Athens, you know? So, I appreciate the challenges, they, they've been around for a long time, thanks.
Okay, are there any other?
Yeah, I have a, I have a quick question, uh, Lori Williams here. Um, so if we weren't to use the civil service, then what pool would we be pulling from? My, my daughter actually took the civil service exam for police, and she said it was very extensive. So if we weren't gonna use that, then what pool would we use? Just anybody without some kind of testing? I mean, I, I just, what other pool would we use?
That's what we didn't have an answer to, that's why we, ultimately, we're, all we can do is make some noise and, and push up to try to get. Some, you know, a more diverse pool, uh, from the civil service testing.
Okay, okay, alright, thank you.
Any other comments or feedback? Don't forget to unmute if you have comments or feedback. Is everyone already worn out from this public hearing? Any other comments or feedback on, uh, the police reform committee plan? Okay. Find my agenda and get myself organized again, and we will continue moving. All right, so that will conclude the public comment section of tonight's meeting. We're going to move into our department head section. Tal, you managed to stick with us, huh?
Yeah, actually, uh, I drew it, moved their meeting till six o'clock and I went up there and we crammed everything in the front of the meeting. So here I am for the rest of the night.
Excellent. All right. So what do you have from a department head standpoint?
Well, um, we've covered most of it. Um, just a quick little update on the conveyance of the DPW building. The closing is set for Friday. We are going to do that by mail. Um, I'm gonna overnight the deed and all of the other documents to the title company. They'll hold it until the wire hits my account and then I'll cut the checks for the Realtor and I'll get the balance over to MJ.
Excellent.
Now, the one thing that we need to do, we went back, MJ and I went back through, um, all of the minutes for the last couple of months. And even though we talked about it a number of times, we never actually said, I move that we sell this property to Moira Little. So we need to do that because I have to recite that particular resolution in the deed itself. So the title company is happy with that.
Would anyone like to propose a resolution to sell the, is it a resolution or a motion? Tal, what would you like?
Resolution.
Would anyone like to propose a resolution to sell the old DPW building? I don't remember the address of it, but we'll edit that in. What's that?
Ninety-one.
Ninety-one North Washington Street to-
Ninety-three.
Ninety-three North Washington. Would anyone like to propose that?
I do.
Ricky?
I'll second.
Rob, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carries. Okay, anything else, Tal?
Um, no, I, I'll just repeat because it's kind of funny. Um, the title company, I talked about this last month. The title company, um, pointed out when they did the search that, um, the deed that went, um, for the parcel at, at ninety-one, which is, um, Moira's, Molly's, um, property, it's kind of defective and they never really actually conveyed it out of the village. So this conveyance will fix that and, um, make sure that it's clear.
Good.
It's kind of funny.
All right. Anything else, Tal?
Oh.
So the one thing we didn't talk about today, I did get an email, uh, from Kenny at Crossroads about setting up that meeting we talked about. So I'll try to get that set up either. It'll probably be next week.
Okay. Um, and you and I'll need to talk about just getting together for 30 seconds to sign the deed and two other documents for the closing today or tomorrow or Friday.
Needs to be, actually, it needs to be today. Uh, well, so the, the, that other meeting we can do virtually. So I could do that next week, but I'm actually out of town next week. So-
I could, I could email you the documents and you could sign them. And then, um, I can email you with, do you have, uh, access to UPS? Um, I'll send you it. Sticker that you can then just throw everything in a, in an envelope and-
I'll, I'll sign it and bring it up to MJ.
Okay. Yep. I'll email those over to you right now.
Okay. Anything else, Tal?
Nope.
Anything from the board for Tal? Thank you, Tal. Anthony?
All right, there you go.
Hello, everybody. First of all, I'd just like to say, thank the village board for the new building. It's a pleasure to work ahead of it right now. We, we're all moved out. We're all moved in. We just had to put all the stuff that we moved out away now. It's down, it's down there scattered everywhere. But we're working on it slowly.
You guys deserved it, Anthony. Well deserved.
I just want to say thank you for that. Um, they have a couple little odd and ed and things left to do, like the, uh, curtain around the wash bay. They're coming next week. They, they got it in. They were supposed to be here yesterday to do it. They got it in, unwrapped it and have the parts to do it. We're missing. So they're going to be here next week to take care of that. And they want to know on the west side of the building where the grinder pumping stuff is, if we want to grade that off and topsoil it and seed it. If we do, they're going to give us a $3,000 credit for that.
Who's they?
Uh, the contractors, the general contractor.
The west side. So that's where we're talking about putting the community garden?
Yeah, well, it'd be on the side of, of the woods where the gas tank is. That needs to be graded off and, and topsoiled and stuff. If we do it, they'll give it this credit for $3,000. We figured it'd be around $1,500 for us to do it by the time we buy the topsoil and stuff. So the village will probably save $1,500 if we do it.
What, what do you think?
We can do it if, if, you know, it's up to you. It's up to you guys if-
I'm trying to picture the area we're talking about, to be honest.
If you're, if you're looking at the front of the building, the right hand side, down along the back.
Yeah, between, between the firehouse and the-
No, between the woods in our new building, there's a, there's a space there that needs to be graded off out to where the community garden is going to be.
Okay. I'm fine with it. Do you need a motion to do it? It doesn't sound like it's going to cost us anything.
No, it's not going to cost us. It's just going to save the village $1,500. But I don't know if you wanted us to do it or just have them do it.
As long as you've got time.
Yeah.
Snowstorms, although as soon as I say that, you'll be working another two weeks plowing snow.
We hope not. So.
I'm comfortable. Any, anything else from the board on that? I, Tal, I don't think we need a, a motion or anything for that, since it's not spending any money. Any concerns from the board on that? Rob, you got any concerns over that?
No, not at all. I'm fine with it.
Okay, so I'll let, I'll let Jason know that. We'll go ahead and do it. We'll take care of that. Um, the other thing I have, we, we did the, I got the report for the, uh, the leak survey.
Yep.
He found 10 leaks, five which are fire hydrants. Two fire hydrants are new. And I, we think what happened was when we put them together, there's always stone in the bottom of the hole. So a little stone might have got stuck underneath and it's just not sealing right. So when we flush, we're going to flush, you know, we'll make sure we flush them and see if it stops. It's not that, um, those two aren't leaking that bad. They're just little leaks. Uh, the other three fire hydrants, they were in, uh, we're going to replace them in the last year when COVID hit. So we only had two guys on, two guys off. So we're gonna, we're gonna replace those. And the other five are on the, on the mains. The worst one is down near the place gate, which is, uh, 30 gallons a minute. So the overall leak is a 110 gallons a minute. He's figuring 57 million gallons of water being lost a year.
57 million or 5.7 million?
I think it's 57. It might be 5.7. He's got 57 on here. It might be.
It's 158,400 gallons per day.
Yeah, per day.
Per day.
All right. So we got a, we putting together a, a plan to address them all?
Yes. I, I think there's, I think they're joint leaks. I don't think there's actually a hole in the main. I think they're just joint leaks, which is a, a kind of a problem for us because none of the valves really shut down. So we try to use what they call a bell clamp. And, and the sewer is so tight to the water that it's really difficult to, to use those. But we won't know until we actually dig them up and see what, what's down there.
Okay.
Stefan?
Hold on just a second. Seth, were any of these leaking directly adjacent to sewer water return? I'm sorry, sewer return?
Oh, well, some, I think that's where they're going. I think they're going into the sewer.
Okay.
That's why they're not coming up out of the ground. I think they're leaking into the sewer.
Okay.
So we have to weather space cooperative and hopefully within the next week or so, we can start, uh, working on those.
Wow. So even, even a, a portion of 145,000 gallons a day is pretty significant drain on the-
Yeah, yeah.
Wow, okay. All right, Josh, what were you going to say?
I, I don't know how closely people are following the stimulus package that Congress just passed, uh, a day or two ago. But, um, there is money that's earmarked specifically for municipalities as small as ours. And if you look at the formula, I think we're scheduled to get, uh, $88,000 twice, once in 90 days and once a year later. And there are limited numbers of things that you can do with that money. But one of the very specific ones is, uh, water infrastructure. So, uh, that may be a little bit of a gift that is coming to the village fairly soon and should just-
CBG grant. So I'd like to, I'd like to have a, a plan rather than react to how we spend the money. I'd like to have it part of a plan, but we'll need to, to think through that and make sure we, we know we're doing with it.
Stefan, I did, I did attend that, um, call for elected officials with Delgado the other day. And I sent some information on what's available. And, um, I, we would have to probably work in conjunction with the town in order to figure out what the disbursements would be. So, um, I actually already had a little bit of an exchange with Supervisor Butler about that. He was on the call as well. So, um, the information is, I have it. I, I, I sent, I forwarded it to you, but there's been so much going on this week that we'll, we'll review it later. Yeah.
Good. Uh, anything else, Anthony?
Uh, just that, uh, April 24th, we're going to have cleanup day. The village-wide cleanup.
Okay, we need to get that published.
We would, uh, we're, we're gonna have it down here. I have the, uh, Benetton coming next week to give us a price on writing up the brush file. So I, I do, the Mary, I'll give it to Mary Jo if he stops. If he comes down next week, I'll give Mary Jo the paperwork on it for the next meeting.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Anything from the board for Anthony?
Anthony, uh, any word on when the roof structure is coming for the salt shed?
Yeah, yes. We, we called them the other day and, uh, we called them a few months ago. They said they don't work in the cold. But we called them again the other day and I don't know how to properly put this, but we're waiting for the migrant workers to come before they can put it up. So they said it's probably going to be sometime in, uh, April.
Okay. All right. At least we got a timeframe, so.
At this point, so long as it's before we need salt again, I guess.
Yes, it, it should be, yes.
Anything else for, for Anthony? All right, chief?
All right. I only got two things. Uh, the new gear has been delivered and then has been handed out two weeks ago.
I saw the photos. Everyone looked nice.
Yep. And, uh, the new camera system has been installed.
Great, good.
I have temporary signs up right now. Uh, I just asked on, uh, today, I found permanent signs to be put up on the building.
Okay, good.
That's all I got.
And your budget inputs are in. Anthony, your budget inputs in? I believe they are.
Yeah, step off, step away for a minute.
Okay. Good. What did we have for callouts last month?
Uh, we had, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 13 calls. Oh, we averaged about from 10 to 20 members for almost every call. A couple mutually aids to, to Kusaki. We had one, our, our team was, uh, requested to City Hudson. And, uh, uh, one, uh, well, Wood Pelastow mutually aid in West Athens.
Questions for the fire chief from the board? Police chief?
I'm still here. Um, my report was submitted. You should have it. We don't have too much. I did send, I tried to send everybody. I got some, a couple of them back, but I sent the resume, uh, for Caitlin Rainer, who is a young female police officer currently works for SUNY Police in Cobal Scale full-time. It would be my recommendation since, especially since we're looking to diversify department a little bit to hire her. She already meets all of the civil service requirements and training requirements.
Is that something you were hoping to do tonight? We need some paperwork filled out on that or something first?
Uh, she has already filled out an application, which I believe Gail forwarded to you. Gail and I interviewed her. Uh, Gail, do you want to say anything?
I think she would be, it would be beneficial to hire her tonight, yes.
Good.
She seemed very capable, very friendly and very knowledgeable.
She's already completed the academy, Roger?
Yes.
She's already working with-
That's correct. And she's been working for a year and a half as a full-time police officer.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Would anyone like to make a motion to hire Caitlin Rainer to the Athens Police Department?
I'll make a motion.
Ricky?
I'll second.
Amy, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So carries. Okay. Anything else? Anything else, Roger?
I don't believe so unless, uh, anybody has anything, uh, to add or any issues that need to be addressed.
Anyone have anything from the board?
How about Ed's retirement? Where do we stand on that?
We're going to talk about that in executive.
Okay.
Anything else for Roger? All right. Thank you, Roger.
Oh, thank you.
So we have Jeff Russo, code enforcement on tonight.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, forgive the background noise. I'm at the police department and we have saw some calls going out across the county. We have, uh, I don't know if there was an update provided in prior months, uh, certainly last month, uh, more so than January. Um, an update on our issuance of building permits. Uh, I've got, well, I count 10 here. Uh, myself and Sergeant Tracasio or Ed, um, have issued so far. We have a number in the works. And when I say in the works, I mean, we have email inquiries about individuals that have already lived in the village or recently purchased a, um, a, a residence in the village or, or a lot of property. So those are either with us or with the planning board as applicable. There are instances where the planning board is, is not necessary, uh, for us to issue permits. Uh, we also, in regards to, uh, short-term rentals, have, uh, an application for new short-term rental in the village as well. It's already zoned as a two-family house. So would, uh, it would meet, uh, at least the local law requirements for that. They are proposing to do some additional works that would go into the planning board if they are trying to build a loft, short-term rental, uh, in, on part of that property.
Okay. And I need to get you a list of a couple more, Jeff, that I forgot to give you that MJ is going to yell at me about later.
She, uh, she, she provided, uh, myself a binder, uh, a couple of months back. So we have that. Uh, so thanks to her for, for getting- So thanks to her for for getting that over to us. And we've been, we've been tracking the current ones and their associated fee schedules. Now, new applications, we've only, we've only had one new application that I'm aware of, not to say that I I haven't. Inadvertently overlooked one. But at this point, we are nearing completion of. Reorganizing the department and looking forward to being able to more accurately and more succinctly perform our duties.
Good, excellent. Questions for code enforcement? From the board? All right, thank you, Jeff. Seth, Seth and or Joe? How are you, Seth?
Good. I emailed out my report to you guys. I hope everybody got it.
I apologize, Seth. I have not opened it.
Okay, no problem. Water plant, everything's pretty much status quo. The finished flows are up about ten thousand gallons a day over where they were last month, so averaging about three hundred and twenty-nine thousand gallons a day. We're keeping up fine, but we're still moving a lot more water than than we were used to. We had the altitude valve at the Dogwood Lane tank serviced last month, so that's working perfectly. And there were no alarm callouts for the month. So that was.
Is the alarm doesn't work?
Yeah, no, the alarm works. Oh, and by the. Oh, thank God, it's been working. The the new cellular alarm system is gonna be installed tomorrow.
Great, good.
So that's, that'll be all taken care of. The village wastewater plant, we are going to out of compliant again this month for the month of February for flows. We averaged.
Months in a row?
That's three months in a row.
Okay.
Yeah, that'll be three months in a row, December, January, and February. We averaged four hundred and twenty thousand gallons a day. So about twenty thousand gallons a day over our permit.
Get these leaks fixed, huh?
Based on the lack of rain, I I wouldn't know where else it's coming from, maybe a little snowmelt. Be contributing to it. And heading March, we're we're over four hundred thousand gallons a day every day this month so far. Yes, no matter, I I could attribute it to, I certainly can't attribute it to rain because we really have. You know, we only had a about little over an inch of rain in the month of February, and we were out of compliance fifteen days. And for the month.
Let's uh, just, you know, from a data standpoint, just keep in touch. Or or Wayne, just Wayne or Anthony, shoot an email when we fix the leaks. Let's see if we see any correspondence, correspondence. Uh, you know, coincidence of the of the leakage and the and the flows.
Okay. I know, I know up on Second Street. We found out just before winter time. Just just above the library, there's a section of sewer line up there. There's like three-foot section, three-quarters of the sewer line is gone, so I'm sure there's a lot of high and I going in there, which we have to fix. We 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 found that out when Catsill came up the last time to televise the sewers for us.
All right, well, you won't have a boring spring, Anthony.
No, not at all.
So that's pretty much it on the sewer plant. Everything else is fine and we're in compliance on other, all other parameters, so we've got no issues there. Rick Rose, just chugging along, we're average about thousand gallons a month. Our last month, six gallon gallons a day. We did exceed seventeen thousand gallon permitted flow one day. And I believe that was the day that we got about an inch of rain and it and a fair amount of snowmelt. So that's pretty much it for the plants. They're kind of moving along. Although back last week, I emailed out to to everybody on the board and to MJ. The the rough copy of the annual water quality report. And was wondering if anybody had any comments or any changes or anything?
Let me, when do we have to submit that, Seth?
By the fifteenth, I have submitted to Department of Health.
Okay, give me till Friday to take a look at the comment section.
Okay.
And get something back to you.
All right, good, thank you. And let's see, oh, the only thing, the other thing at the water plant. Those leaks account for about a hundred, like I said, about a hundred and fifty-eight thousand gallons a day. That is fifty-seven thousand or fifty-seven million gallons a year. So it's a significant amount of water. I just finished roughing out the data for the water withdrawal report. And in calendar year two thousand twenty, right now, I've got forty-five million gallons unaccounted for. So that would explain it. That would explain it. So. Other than that, that's all I got.
Seth, I have a question from the chat. Is there a set threshold for how many months we can be out of compliance?
It's for non-compliance reports within a six-month period, I believe is is the is the trigger. So. Hope we will get this squared away and and nothing will, nothing will come of it.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the board for Seth? All right, thanks, Seth.
Very good. Thank you all very much. Have a nice evening.
Wait, I have one more question.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
What what happens if we are, if we are four months out of six out of compliance?
Well, that'll catch the the attention of the EPA. And they will in turn call up D E C and say, okay, what's going on in Athens? That will, so that will be, we'll get a visit from the Region Four engineer. Rebecca, who I've been working with for years. And she'll come down and and see what's going on and and what are we doing to deal with it? And we have been proactive. The leak assessment and all and and that kind of thing and the fact that you slip lined somewhat some pipes, so it's not like you're not doing anything and just ignoring it. As long as you can. Can satisfy her her questions and and she sees that that you're being proactive and doing something about it. That may be all that happens as long as the numbers start to come down. They stay high for any reason, that could eventually trigger a. A compliance issue, obviously, and and a consent order.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Okay. Trying to make sure I don't miss anything this week.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, Seth. Thanks again.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we've got a facility use application for the annual E J A P T O five K. Um, this is in May. May fifteenth. I didn't get a chance today. I wanted to go on and see where we are from a standpoint of state rules. Around doing a gathering like this, the letter doesn't account for any kind of COVID restrictions. Which, you know, I need to understand where we are from a New York state legality standpoint on this. And what restrictions are still in place with the state? So I want to kick this one down the road, if that's all right, till the next meeting. To call them and and just make sure that we're not gonna be illegal for the state if we move forward with it and ensure that we've got any. COVID compliance restrictions in place that need to be in place with it. That all right with the board? Take that as a yes.
Yes.
Next. We have three memberships for the Athens Volunteer Fire Department. Ashley Petrucca, George Baker, and David Scott Sergi Junior. Everything looked good to me. I didn't see any issues or concerns with it. Anything from the board? Chief, you want to say anything on it?
No, we all met with them and they're all, you know, they've been coming around a lot during the drill nights and seeing what we're all about. They're excited to start.
At sixteen, can you go through the academy and the training?
Yes, you can.
Great. Any questions from the board?
No, I I work with Ashley up at Sleepy Hollow and and I can tell you right now, she's gonna be an asset to the fire department. Very impressive.
Right, if there's no other comments, would anyone like to make a motion to approve? Ashley Petrucca, George Baker, and David Scott Sergi Junior to the Athens Volunteer Fire Department, all as active members, correct? Let me check that. Those are both active, yes, all as active members.
I will.
Amy?
I'll second it.
Ricky? All in favor? Opposed? So carries. Any comments or concerns from the board on the minutes from the February twenty-fourth meeting? Anyone like to make a motion to approve the February twenty-fourth board meeting minutes?
I'll offer.
Rob?
I'll second.
Amy, all in favor? So carries, did we review the abstracts?
Yes.
Any concerns or questions over the abstracts or vouchers? Abstracts, I guess.
No.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the vouchers for the abstracts?
I will.
Can I get a second?
Ricky.
Ricky, second. Sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Sounds like betting war going on.
We are going to forego a resolution, so we're we're still open for public comment on local laws number two and three. So we will forego any resolutions there. Correspondence, I won't spend really any time on the correspondence. It's a lot of kind of the same. Changes to schedules for Flint Mine, issuance of. Evidence for submittal for Flint Mine. The only one that I want to spend any time on unless the board has questions about them is number four. Wayne, have you seen this one? This is an M O U, so if you recall a while back, the fire department, this, so this is for the Green County Senior Nutrition Site. They asked if they could use the fire department as a backup site.
Yeah, uh, yeah, hold on one sec. I got John, he's gonna step in and.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, basically got back in contact with Maureen Murphy. She had some questions, we had some questions. She did not name us as a additionally insured. Also, the fee that we had talked about making some type of a donation to the fire department. We just talked about a flat rate if they used it, twenty-five dollars a day, a hundred dollars a week, five hundred dollars a year, should the need arise. However, we're being positive about that, that we don't need to. The information is back in her hands. She's supposed to be sending a new updated. Memorandum of understanding for the village to sign and the department to sign as well. That's where we are. I talked to her last Friday.
Perfect, thank you, John. That answers all those questions. Any any questions on that one then from the board?
No.
Anything else on correspondence? I moved through it quickly, but it's it it all looks kind of the same.
No.
All right, new business, leak detection report, I think we covered that. Any other questions on that one? Tentative budget MJ sent out to me, we'll get that out tomorrow to everybody, the tentative budget. I think we're missing just police MJ, is that right?
Yes, just missing the police department.
Okay, so right now it should have last year's budget numbers. What what I'm gonna send out to you tomorrow, Gail, will have, and Roger will have last year's budget numbers. So we need to make sure that we update that. Everything else is current. So that'll go out tomorrow. Anything else on that, MJ?
No.
Okay. From old business, I think we covered short-term rentals. Did you have anything else on that, MJ? I I I will sit down with them and make sure we've covered the ones you sent me. It sounds like they've got it, though.
Yeah, yeah, there's a few on there that they still haven't sent in their application or their fee, so. I'll send you the list again because nothing's changed since the last time I spoke to you.
Okay. And DPW Garage, we've got Jason sent out the final. Payments, so we just need to get that all cleared up here, I think, and then. We gotta get that bond cleared up, so I know what to put in the budget for next year, MJ.
Yeah, I spoke to the bank and I spoke to the bond council. And the bank of Green County had sent us just the interest payment for this year. Because according to their paperwork, that isn't finalized that ban until September, actually. So the village may not have to pay a principal payment on that bond until next year, next fiscal year.
Okay. Okay, so let's just make sure we've got that. Is that represented then in the draft budget that I'm gonna send out, or is that?
Yes, yes.
All right, let's go around the room. We're gonna have an executive session tonight, but before we do that, we'll go around. Rob, you got anything?
Anthony covered everything on the DPW update on the building and stuff. The only thing I have, it's non-related to that, is I was privileged to be given a tour of the new Green County. Jail up in Kupsoke the other day. Very impressive. I believe they plan on possibly putting, starting a house. Inmates in there possibly in June. The sheriff's office part, hopefully within the next month or so, they should be starting to operate out of there. But the undersheriff, Adam Brainerd, wanted me to convey to the public that anybody is welcome to. Tour the facility. All you have to do is contact the sheriff's office and they will make arrangements to. Give you a tour of the facility. So anybody that has any questions or concerns about about the place. I would strongly recommend that you look into getting a tour of the place. I think it would answer a lot of the questions and stuff like that. It's very impressive, though. So I was just fortunate enough to be in the right place at the right time to get a tour the other day of it. So that's all I have.
Ricky?
I'm not really, Anthony asked after mine about the leaks and Seth said that. The new cell phone and everything will be in tomorrow, so I really don't have nothing.
All right, thank you. Gail?
I think it was my bad about the police budget. I'll send it off to Mary Jo right now.
Okay, thank you. That's it?
Yes.
Amy?
Um, just the signs for the parks that we ordered shipped and they should arrive tomorrow. So be on the lookout, the 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 rules and the, you know, please use the dog park if you want to take your dog off the leash signs. And the poop bags are already in. I think the poop bags have been in for a while.
They're installed in the park?
No, they're here. We have to install them together. It's a whole system.
All right, yeah, I got I got out without my coat on and realized my doggy bags are in my coat, yeah. Thank, so I drug him home quickly. He was not pleased with me.
Um, and the other thing I wanted to bring up, I got a note from a resident regarding the parking on North Franklin. And I, it's been hanging out for a long time, so I want to know what we need to do to get that.
We're gonna cover that. That will be on the agenda at the next meeting. We'll revisit that law at the next meeting, so. Yeah.
Because it went from a safety issue to a speeding issue, so.
Yeah, we're gonna bring it back to a safety issue, but we'll we'll, we've, we're gathering down on speeding, but we'll we'll discuss that at the next meeting.
Okay, great. That's all I had then, thank you.
Um, for me, oh, well, so Tal, you got anything else?
No, sir.
MJ?
Just a couple of things, very quick. The, there's a resolution that needs to be passed for the planning board, the Green County Planning Board, did you get that, Stefan? Regarding the Green County Planning Board?
I talked to Amy about it and we haven't followed up on it.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that you had that.
I have a slight update on that, MJ.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Only because I've sounded a couple of people about joining and I don't have anyone yet.
Okay.
So that's my big update, but.
So, yeah, I, I need to get somebody in there, but that's something, so he wants it by the 15th, is that right?
Yeah, it expires the 12th of March, but considering, you know, the elections are, you know, that month and everything, so.
I think what I'll do is we'll wait till after the election, I think that just defaults to me staying on it and then after the election, we'll make a final decision.
Yeah, I was, just wanted to make sure it was on people's radar. And the, I also have a payment for RMB mechanical for the DPW garage that's not on the abstracts there, is it okay if I pay that? It's $17,000. That's just part of the construction of the DPW garage.
Yeah, I need to come in and sign it anyway, right?
Yeah.
So, yeah.
And did anybody look into the Van Loon House Electric?
Yeah, so there, they had space heaters that they've had in there, they're on, theoretically on timers, but they've had them turned up to dry the plaster and paint that they were doing and they did not realize what the bills, what it was doing to the bills, so they are shut down and that won't happen again. He didn't realize the impact it was having.
Okay, and that's it.
Okay. From me, ongoing thing, so the, the only ongoing thing I've got is I've got another meeting with Columbia Green Community College, they continue to be interested in a partnership with 133 North Washington. I've got a meeting set up for them, I think it's the 22nd. To continue to keep that conversation going. Beyond that, I think we talked about everything else that was on my list. So, again, we're going to go into executive. What I will again make the promise that we will not conduct business once we adjourn from executive, we will adjourn from the meeting so as to not reopen a public meeting that no one can join. So I'll ask everyone who's not going to remain in executive with us to please drop.